All right. We are live. So, welcome everyone to this evening's City Council meeting of August 10th, 2021. I can't believe it's the middle of August already, but anyway, in the interest of the government transparency with regarding deliberations and decisions made by the City Council, and according to open meeting law, since the meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is being recorded by video and audio, will be conducted by rule participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you are calling on our phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be held by roll call vote. So once again, if you are calling in on a phone, there is, you can press star nine to request to speak, and if you are watching on a device, there is a raise hand button. Use these two prompts to request to speak during oral communications and public hearing. So, in attendance tonight, I'm going to start at my top left-hand corner. We have Councilor Pat, we have myself, Councilor LeBlanc, we have Councilor Gilman, Councilor McCarthy, Councilor Holmgren, Councilor Cox, Councilor Nolan, Councilor Memhard, and Councilor O'Hara. Also in attendance, we have our CFO, John Dunn, our city auditor Kenny Costa, and our city clerk, Joanne Sinos. All right, with that being said, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, the first order of business, please.
The first order of business is oral communications.
All right, so before we start oral communications, I have a quick announcement. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall be, shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within two weeks period relative to disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each, and the council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. All right, under oral communications, if anybody would like to speak, press star nine or raise your hand. Karen, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Steve. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And we have your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Karen Cavazza Spencer, 67 Langsbit Street. Early today, I sent you counselors an article on disinformation and fluoridation. If you haven't read it yet, I hope you'll read it later tonight or tomorrow. Please notice, it contains links to several peer-reviewed studies conducted by distinguished experts that were published this year in reputable medical journals. The gist is that even low levels of fluoride in drinking water considered optimal by many, but not all, dentists, poison bodies and brains beginning in the womb where fluoride exposure is associated with increased rates of learning disabilities in children, and in the bones of the elderly where decades of consuming optimally fluoridated water is associated with increased fractures. In other words, fluoridation policy poisons us womb to tomb. But tonight, I want to focus on leadership and integrity. I know some of you counselors are not seeking reelection, and some of you were not in office when I and a group of residents attempted to have fluoridation discussions in 2018, 2019. But some of you were here, and all of you sought this leadership position. I also know that several of you sitting here today engaged in unethical and outrageously inappropriate bullying in an attempt to suppress the truth and-
Karen, Karen, we can't, we can't say stuff like that with the council. So, just so you know, you can't have anything derogatory toward any complaints or individual performances.
Okay, let me skip ahead.
All right.
A little bit here. There were emails from me forwarded to out-of-town fluoridation lobbyists who issued bail threats against me regarding personal lawsuits if I persisted in reaching out to my city counselors. Money carpet backers attacks on local citizens, senior citizens who present her city council with scientific references is not leadership. Let me skip a little. Okay, I'm going to the end.
Is this, did you, did you call in to bash us because this isn't, this isn't-
No, I'm going to the end. I suspect some of you think you can protect your family with water filters. Let me disabuse you of that notion. Despite claims to the contrary, water filters are woefully inadequate in removing enough fluoride from drinking water to make it safe for pregnant women and young children, the elderly, and anyone with thyroid, kidney, or autoimmune disease. Moreover, any food prepared with tap water is contaminated with fluoride. Many fluoride poisoned children were required fed services because of the damage done to their brains, permanent damage. Many adults with chronic illnesses have the quality of their lives degraded. Many older people find their bones fracture easily, all of which is a financial drain on the city of Gloucester over which the city has no control unless it seeks a home rule exemption to Chapter 111, Section 8C, the mass fluoridation law. This doesn't end fluoridation. It only gives the city, city control over fluoridation policy. I suggest that before the City Council, this council leaves office, it at least does that one thing, petition the state for home rule over fluoridation. And I will send you a document with a list of the full citations and links to the science, to this science that I've referenced and other science for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine, and if you are watching on a device, there is a raised hand button. All right, this is perfect timing because I was going to announce our school committee member, Kathy Clancy, and she's actually here to speak under oral communications. Kathy, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you, Steve. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give you a huge voice of support for all that you have done to help us get to the point with this new school. I know some of you will not be continuing on the council, but each and every one of your support and your leadership on this particular issue is, has been instrumental in, in moving this along and being really in an exciting place. I know some teachers were in Veterans Today setting up for a, you know, for their new school, and they could not have been more thrilled to be on, at this point. So, along the way, I thank you for your thoughtful questions, for your persistence in making sure everything was done properly and, and transparently in terms of getting, keeping the community informed. And I just wanted to say thank you, and we're all excited that we're now at, you know, this continues to move along in a great way.
Thank you, Kathy. All right, is there anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? Press star nine if you're calling in on a phone or you raise your hand. There is a button to request to speak. All right, seeing none. I know we normally don't debate, but I'd like to speak to Karen. Karen, I admire your passion and, you know, what you do. So, keep up the good fight. Unfortunately, some of us agree, some of us don't agree with, with all, not with what you're doing with, with anything all the time. So, just, let's agree to disagree sometimes and still be civil to each other. Regardless of what it is, it could be anything, but I admire your passion. Keep up what you're doing and don't give up. That's all. All right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right, so we do have a consent agenda and a unanimous consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, I would like to remove the reappointment for Jerry Oppenheim. I don't want to remove it. I just want to recognize him for his leadership on the EDIC and his many years of service. I think during the consent agenda, moving forward, if we do have reappointments, we should recognize them and their, their duties that they've done over the years. So, moving forward with this council and hopefully the next council will be able to recognize these people because they don't come before us this evening. They're on the consent agenda, so they kind of get overlooked, but Jerry's been on the EDIC for quite a while, and he's done an amazing job, and he blew us away at O&amp;A last week, and he didn't have to. So, I just want to recognize Jerry. All right, so I will, Sean.
I would like to remove one thing, undo the special events permit, request for street closure for our ceremony in Shore Road. I'd like that more of a moment. I'd just like to people, if they, they want to have any questions about closing the road for a private ceremony, if they could reach out to the planning and development committee, Councilor Gilman, or the city clerk, to let them know how they feel about the situation, because it is a little bit different from what we'd normally do for a road closure, and it seems tough to close a road for a wedding ceremony. So, with that being said, I'd like to just put that out there and remove it, and then we can put it back with information.
All right, Joanne, do we have to vote on that? I'm not too sure with this one.
Well, he did remove it. Okay, so you can vote the consent agenda as amended, and then just to vote to refer the special events to P&amp;D on a separate vote.
Sean, you want to move that?
Yes, I'd like to move that.
All right, we have a second. All right, it's been moved by Counselor Nolan and seconded by Counselor Gilman. Does everybody understand the amendment to the consent agenda? All right, roll call is Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
And Counselor Cox?
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Back to the consent agenda as amended. I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Gilman, seconded by Counselor Nolan. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, would you have a consent agenda? Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda? I mean, the unanimous consent agenda, I'm sorry. All right, I will entertain a motion to accept unanimous consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Gilman?
Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Memhard. All right, everybody understand the consensus, unanimous consent agenda? All right, Counselor Gilman, roll call?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of August 5th.
Thank you. I'd like to hand it over to our Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Melissa Cox.
I present a consent agenda for your approval. If anybody has any questions about anything on there. Seeing none, I move the consent agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Memhard. Counselor, roll call, Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counsel, now Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
All right, motion to accept the consent agenda for Budget and Finance passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, good job, everyone. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The Ordnance Administration Committee Report of August 2nd.
All right, our O&amp;A Chair, nothing to report, thank you. All right, next agenda.
Development Standing Committee Report of August 4th.
All right, and our P&amp;D Chair, Counselor Gilman.
No items to be brought forward.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The Schedule of Public Hearing, Public Hearing 2021-024 to amend Gloucester Court of Orange's Chapter 22, Section 22265, Turning Movements Generally, and Section 22159, Same Between Certain Hours on Certain Days Regarding Pleasant Street and Smith Street.
All right, so I would like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine. If you are watching on a device, laptop, or whatever you choose, there is a raise hand button to speak. This is a public hearing. Anybody that would like to speak in favor or in opposition, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
All right, do we have any counselor questions? Seeing none. All right, I will close the public hearing and call for the committee report. Counselor Nolan.
On a motion by the Minutes, Ordnance Administration voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the City Council amend GCO Chapit 22, Section 22265, Turning Movements Generally, Section 22159, Same Between Certain Hours on Certain Days, Section 22270, Parking prohibited at all times, and second, Section 22283, Bus Stops and Taxi Stands Regarding Pleasant Street and Smith Street. Nice move.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Joanne, is that the right?
Yes, so what happened is after the committee voted, we found that Section 22270, Prohibited Parking at All Times, and 22283, Bus Stops and Taxi Stands was already amended. So, you do not have to vote on those two sections.
Yeah, perfect. I was just double checking. All right, any counselor discussion on this? It's been moved by Counsel Nolan, seconded by Counsel, Counsel Gilman, was that you?
Yes.
All right, seconded by Counsel Gilman. Any discussion? Counselor Cox?
This is just the same rhythm that we had for the swing space for West Parish. So, there will be a few things that are going to be in addition, but the police have said that they will work with the school on temporary signage and everything until we can move forward with some more communication with the residents and the businesses. But there's going to be a couple more adjustments moving forward due to the bump out and the turning radiuses of the bus. In previous years, they didn't need to turn right on, on to Shepherd, but this year, since it's a vets community, that they will need to turn right. So, we just, it's a little bit more than the 20 feet from the intersection, so, but I want to make sure we do that right and through the system with public hearings, so.
Thank you, Melissa, and I'm glad you brought that up because it's the same thing we did a couple of years, a few years ago.
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Counselor Pat?
Yeah, just, I wanted to thank Counselor Cox for putting through this, through in this manner, in that obviously this was done the last time the swing space was used at St. Anne, and I want to thank her for involving the, the public, the residents in the neighborhood as we go forward. So, with, you know, whatever public hearings that we need to make them aware to work with things. So, I want to just, just to thank her for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Any other counselor questions, comments before we vote? All right, so I'll start the roll call. Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara?
Yes.
Counsel Pat?
Yes.
Counsel Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, is there anything further? Should we enact this as an emergency order, seeing that it's so close?
There. Hold on, I, I spoke with DPW in the police department. We had another site visit a couple days ago. It's only a 15-day window, so DPW is going to put up temporary signs until the 30 days. It's, we're, we're between eight and 10 days short.
Okay.
So, I don't think it's necessary for an emergency order, but-
I just didn't want to, I didn't want to call the next order of business if somebody wanted to declare.
Somebody can if they want to, but I've worked through the kinks with everybody, and I don't think it's necessary.
Thank, thank, I appreciate the clarification. Joanne, did you have something to say?
Yes, you need a motion to amend the main motion because you need to add the Traffic Commission recommendations that were not voted on at O&amp;A. So, that's why on the template, you have to put the, the directions plus the times of, of the turning of the movements and the same between hours.
Okay. Sean, do you have that?
It's on the template that was sent?
Yeah, I have it in front of me. You want to amend it?
We need to amend Section 22265, Turning Movements Generally by adding, while schools in session, Pleasant Street in a northerly direction, no left turn onto Smith Street between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 9:15 a.m., and 2:30 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. Then, to amend Section 22159, Same Between Certain Hours on Certain Days by adding, four, Pleasant Street, while schools in session, Pleasant Street from a point beginning at the intersection with Prospect Street, Westerly Side in a northerly direction to Smith Street, no parking between the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 9:30 m.m., and 2:30 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. Five, Smith Street, while schools in session, Smith Street, Sutherly Side, through its intersection with Pleasant Street in a westerly direction to Maplewood Avenue, no parking between the hours of 8:30 a.m. to 9:15 a.m. and 2:30 p.m. to the 3:15 p.m. bus pickup and drop off only, and I salute.
Second.
All right, motions to amend has been moved by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counsel O'Hara. Is there any discussion? Pretty basic and straightforward. Counselor Gilman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy that the Traffic Commission's recommendation was added, and because I think that that just puts further clarification to the preciseness of this order. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else? All right, seeing none. I will call the roll call for the amendment. Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
Counsel Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy?
Yes.
Counsel Memhard?
Yes, step by step in our right direction here.
There you go. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Motion to amend has passed on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, great job, everyone. School will be in session before we know it. Seems like just they got out of school a couple of weeks ago, and it seems like they're going to be back in school in about two hours, it seems. But I'm always happy to help the school committees, the school system, and get this thing going in the right direction. And as Counselor Cox says, that there probably will be a little bit of tweaking here and there along the way. All right, Madam Clerk, we have the next order of business, please.
Next order of business is Counselor's request to the mayor.
All right, I will start off with Counselor Holmgren.
Thank you very much. I don't have any requests to the mayor, but I do just want to reiterate to the public that there is a public hearing that the school committee is holding on the 25th in the evening regarding the reopening of the schools. So, if you have any interest in attending that, I would highly encourage it. I am, I'm foggy as to what time exactly, but it's going to be on the city calendar. So, please keep a lookout. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Counsel McCarthy?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Counsel Memhard?
I would just like to recognize and thank both the mayor and all the city councilors that were involved, number one, in recognizing former counselor Joe Shalino's 30th anniversary at the Weather Vane Shop on Main Street, where there was a ribbon cutting sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce that Joe and the mayor executed very successfully in spite of the rain. And then again, the Fisherman's Wives Memorial later that same Wednesday evening, which was even, again, in spite of the weather, a lovely celebration and event with the IlluminArts program. So, thank you all for participating and supporting us.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor Nolan?
I actually don't request, I just want to make a statement. Social media can be a blessing and a nightmare. Some recent comments about our Department of Public Works and people not working for a living and hiding behind buildings and not doing their job, it's derogatory, and it's not sane or fair. Our Department of Public Works work very hard for you. They're short-staffed, and they do a great job. When it's 20 below zero, there's a water break, they're in the hole to make sure you have fresh water. So, if you want to run around and say that they're not doing their job because you're upset with the budget constraint, it's not fair to them and their families that you banged them up on social media. Just my two cents.
All right, thank you, Sean. Appreciate that. Counsel O'Hara?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Counsel Pat?
Not a request to the mayor, but first of all, I'd like to echo what Counselor Memhard said, and especially what Counselor Nolan just said. As you said earlier, Mr. President, when we had a member of the public speaking, being derogatory towards people, whether it be here or on social media or anything else, does absolutely nothing to add to our community in any way, at least not in a positive fashion. I wanted to add, since we're now on the, at the public part, that Counselor Cox had asked about fireworks display and having, you know, no salutes, no sound. And I wanted to, just when I explained to a couple of you earlier, that this year's Labor Day show, which is going to have somewhere between 1,400 and 1,500 shells, and about 100 of those would have been salutes, that with the only salutes in the entire show, will, a display will be limited to 10 to 15 at the very, very end of the finale. And that information will be posted in the newspaper when we get close to that date. But as Counselor Cox is going to reach out, I will also reach out to the, the veterans community to let them know what's going on. And obviously, for those who are here on, they can let all their furry friends know that hopefully this will be better for those that are bothered by them.
Thank you, Barry. Counselor Cox?
I just want to add to what Counselor Nolan said earlier. I also saw some derogatory comments through the DPW on Facebook regarding a broken piece of equipment. Instead of trying to add fuel to the fire, reach out to any one of us to get the background on it. It's an insurance issue. We're not allowed to take it down, and it has to remain up until it gets settled. I mean, it's very frustrating to see all the nonsense out there, the speculation, the rumors and everything else carried out over social media, that it's frustrating. I know we are all very protective of the city departments, and it's just a shame that people would rather spread lies and fire than truth. So, it's unfortunate. So it's unfortunate and we see it every day, so, um, hopefully. Somebody will. Stop. Thank you.
Well said, Counselor, I agree a hundred percent. Uh, Counselor Gilman.
Um, thank you, Counselor, I have two quick things. Um, first, I just wanted to let the public know and city councilors. That the In Squam Village Players is hosting a show, an outdoor show this year. And it is called Nothing to Hide. And it was co-produced, co-written by Mary Curtis, who was one of our. Directors who just passed away, um, less than two months ago. And it's, um. It's pretty fun and there's still tickets available, you can go on W W W. Dot In Squam Village Players dot org and get your tickets. And tonight, we're excited because we have about seventy seniors that are going to watch the dress rehearsal. As a complimentary evening to let them experience musical theater in our community. Um, so we're excited. We have fifth, about fifty from Rose Baker and twenty from Rockport Council on Aging. And the other thing I wanted to say was, I wanted to just do a, a shout out to. Um, Mike Hale, Counsel Nolan and Grace Poria on the Betterment Policy. I just had my first start to finish Betterment for Squam Rock Road. We had the major meeting on Saturday morning with the, with all nineteen of Butters. Sitting around an outside circle and going through the very tedious details. Of the process. And, um, I just wanted to, to, to mention that on many occasions, the four. Folks, um, the, the parcel of Butters who were leading this. Commented on how professional Grace Poria is. And how helpful she is in leading this. And also, they made, um, similar comments to Mike Hale in terms of his accessibility. And his willingness to, um, to be there for the folks that have questions and coming up with the estimates. And then finally to Sean Nolan, this was his, uh, policy and, um. It's a good one and it works. And he's been extraordinarily accessible to me when I've needed to call him, so I just wanted to say that. That's it. And, um, thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Belle, and I'm sure Grace appreciates it, as you could see through the council, whoever's watching this evening. Um, we know Joanne's a rock star, she does all of our work, but Grace is quietly working in the background without the recognition. And when you had mentioned her name, we all shook our heads in agreement with you and Grace is awesome, so it's a pleasure working with Grace. I'm sure Joanne will pass this on to her tomorrow morning. And for myself, uh, last but not least, I don't have any requests to the mayor. Um. It was a great bazaar, it was one of the first bazaars that I've got to walk around in a very long time, usually I'm. Either working or out of town during the bazaar, but. I got out for a little bit, I got to meet some of the candidates for, uh, election. And, uh, got to walk through, I talked to the cops for kids and. And, uh, a few other vendors and stopped by Joe Shalino's shop the other day for the ribbon cutting and. Um. It was, it was, it was nice to see our city alive again. Um, with that being said, if we have nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right. Moved by everybody and seconded by Counselor Gilman. All right, roll call, Counselor, Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yes.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
And Counselor Cox.
Yes.
All right, great job, everyone, have a good night and, uh, let's see you soon.
Good night.
Good night.